Switch.
I feel like everyone, like, yes. Can we?
Take one.
Yes, that would be nice.
Going to the ER at nine o'clock and staying there until like 2:00 AM is not as fun as staying today.
It is one o'clock on Tuesday, November eighteenth. This is a regularly scheduled city commission meeting. Madam Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Mayor.
It is Commissioner Anru's turn to do the pledge of allegiance and invocation. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you bow with me? Father, we come to this day, we are so grateful for the opportunity we have to live in Garden City, to live in the state of Kansas, Father, and to live in the United States. We ask that you help us to be generous to all of those, Father, who are in need this time and then during the season. Father, we are grateful for all that you do for us. We ask for wisdom in each and every decision. And, Father, we thank you for each and every person here and all the families represented. We give you glory and honor. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Next item is the minutes from the last meeting of the commission meeting. Is there any changes? I didn't see anything on it. They'll stand as approved as presented. Item five is public comment. This is a time that we set aside for anybody that would like to come and speak to the commission on any item that is not on the agenda. We give you five minutes, and please state your name for the record.
Good afternoon. My name is Beth Koksel, and I work at Livwell-Finney County. So in December of 2024, Livwell-Finney County received a Pathways to a Healthy Kansas grant from Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas. As part of this grant, we've begun partnering with Mike Earhead and Casey Cincinero at the State of Garden State on a multimodal transportation package focused on improvements in needed repairs along the Tally Trail. Right now, we're in the engagement phase with our, of our community focus, and that focus being families living near the trail. Our plan is to connect with these families at school events before the end of the semester to listen, learn, and gather input about their experiences and priorities. Once this information gathering period is completed, we'll review and analyze the feedback, develop a plan and timeline that reflects community needs, and then return to you for your approval of a non-competitive $50,000 grant package. We anticipate bringing this forward to the commission sometime in February. Thank you for your time today, and a special thank you to Mike and Casey for jumping into this process with us. We appreciate your partnership and your commitment to improving active transportation in Garden City. So should you have any further questions before we come back, just feel free to let Mike or Casey know, and we'll be happy to share that information with you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good afternoon.
Hello.
Frank Volteires, and I'm currently building a house in Chapel Heights subdivision on Stetson Way. And I made a little picture of you. I want to see what I'm going to talk about. But can I step away from the microphone? Okay.
Do you need my?
No. So I'm currently building a house there on Stetson Way. What I noticed is, as I'm coming in and out every single day of the subdivision, there's only one way in and one way out. So mostly a safety item that I'm trying to bring up. And also, I hear, sorry about that. There's a picture of a road that kind of started, but they never finished into the subdivision. So I guess my question is, that little circle is, if something were to happen in that area, there's no other way for all the residents to come out of that subdivision. So my question would be, is there a timeline that the city has known about this road that can get this built, or is it something that's down the line for that subdivision? That would be, I don't think this is the right place to bring that up, but I didn't know anywhere else to go.
Yeah. Yeah, thanks, Frank. This is, yeah, this is absolutely the right place. We'll, we can't kind of answer or do any motions for you yet, but we can certainly just kind of write it down and get back to you, you know, with that process, so.
Awesome. I just want to make sure I pointed that out. I have visual for you. I see you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Sister Rosita Webber. I have had the care of the community garden down on Chilman Avenue for 25 years now. After the Monfort fire, many of us here in town said, what can we do to help those folks? And we thought about several things, but we decided that probably one of the things that the poor, many of whom had been there, were needing would be food. And so we proposed that we would put a community garden in down there. The city supported us by extending the water line from where it existed and putting in a meter there, tetral, put in the water line for us without cost. And then we had the task of putting the lines into, that were necessary, into the garden itself along the one side and then down each of these sets of aisles that were there. We decided we wanted to keep it very economical. We made plots of 40 by 40 with line down the middle and then sized four times, so we had 10 by 20 plots, eight, in each one of those squares that were there. May 11th, we had everything put together enough to have a ground opening, a ground opening there, and we invited people to come to that, and we began to rent plots. The first year, 2000, we had 19 renters with kind of four plots, as much as we were able to have rented at that point in time. The next year, we had a little more tension. We ended up with 38 renters who rented 85 plots. People deciding that 10 by 20 really wasn't enough. They needed a little more. The total plots in the garden are 128. And over the years, we have had 32 to 38 different individual renters or online groups that have rented. And most years, a good proportion of, or all of the spots were rented. 2008, we had to reduce our plots because our neighbors had ill trees and they were growing in. So reduced them again, and then about five years later, had to come in even further because the tree roots were taking all of the moisture, and that was not very good farming land. And so every year, we realized that people were enjoying it more. Some people came back. There were always a few people who came and began, perhaps with only one or two plots, and after a month or so said, not for me. I don't, I didn't realize you had to water that all.
That's a lot of work.
That much care, or that the weeds will come up that rapidly. But over the years, we've had many faithful gardeners and some people who actually probably spent six, eight, 10, or even more years with us. And they're very disappointed to see that we're going to be closing it down. I've been in charge of it over those 25 years. There's no one to replace me, and that plot is just a small part of the five acres, almost five acres that we have here. So this will be closed down, and I want to thank you for the support you gave us in the beginning, and for the continued support you gave us by providing water over all of these years. If we had to pay for the water, we could not have maintained that $10 a space rent that we were able to maintain and make it very economical for me poor people who could not have afforded more than that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Brittany Martin. I sent this letter on Sunday because I wanted to give you guys time to review it, what you guys have, and I'm really appreciative of that. I've received responses back about my concern being looked into. I also appreciate the additional document that's included for public review when we're talking about the Masterfee schedule. That was also helpful, and I understand a lot of time goes into these. I just wanted to get a full picture on the increases as a resident, and I still want to advocate for the least amount of fees, you know, possible. But I'll go ahead and read the letter that I sent you guys, just So, Dear City Commissioners and Mayor, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to address your regarding the proposed updates to the city's Masterfee schedule. I want to express my concern about several of the proposed fee increases and the overall timing of these adjustments. Many residents in our community are already struggling to make ends meet. Every dollar matters right now, and even small increases, small increases can create no hardship for individuals and families. It is especially concerning that the proposed schedule does not indicate how much each fee is increasing, nor when the last adjustment occurred from the 2026 proposal change. Transparency in this process is essential for residents to understand the reasoning behind these changes. In reviewing the proposal, I found multiple fees, some of which I have personally paid that increased by at least 50%. Such a large jump seems excessive. I do not believe that across-the-board increases of this size are justified, especially when compared with surrounding counties. This appears particularly true in the area of municipal court fees, which already place a significant burden on low-income residents. It is also important to consider the broader economic context. Our community has disapproved any sales tax, and many individuals have faced job losses or delays in work authorization. Local nonprofits are stretched thin, trying to meet rising needs of direct services, food, utilities, and other essentials. These proposed increases would further string residents who are already doing everything they can to stay afloat. I am especially concerned about the proposed increase in municipal court fees and warrant-related fees as we prepare for new jail with more capacity. Higher fees could lead to more individuals being unable to pay fines, resulting in increased incarceration for people who are simply poor. This outcome would be deeply counterproductive and unjust. Additionally, I would like to raise awareness of the situation I mentioned at a recent county commission meeting regarding due process for immigrants detained by ICE. In several cases, ICE has not allowed individuals to return to address their pending city or county court cases. When these individuals are permitted from appearing through no fault of their own, they often receive failure to appear warrants, which then result in additional fees and penalties. Increased warrant-related fees without accounting for circumstances like these only compounds existing injustices and place an even heavier burden on those least able to resolve them. I also question whether the city's analysis of comparable fees considered all categories or only select areas. I urge the commission to ensure that any comparison with other counties are comprehensive and accurate, rather than implementing steep increases all at once. I encourage the city to adopt a gradual, transparent approach. For example, modest adjustments would be more reasonable and fair. A specific example of concern is the neighborhood revitalization program fee. This is a proposed to rise substantially since used in, since I used it personally in 2019 when I bought my house. It was $25. While I understand that the need for periodic increases, there should be a clear, fair formula that aligns with inflation and supports accessibility, especially for first-time homeowners in targeted revitalization areas. Our community is resilient, but we need city policies that reflect compassion, transparency, and fairness. I respectfully ask that the commission reconsider the magnitude and pace of these proposed fees increases and work toward a more balanced and inclusive structure that considers the realities residence-based. And so like I said, a lot of you guys have already responded, you know, provided the update so that us, you know, give me a comparison, but I just wanted to come today, you know, and say thank you for providing that, and I'm still advocating for those fees. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Vicky Gurman, Vice Chair, Finney County Commission. So just a little bit of background. Well, first of all, Commissioner Ortiz kind of asked me to come and speak today. Just a little bit of background. As a county commissioner, we, I've received a multiple calls about homeless encampments and people wanting something done about it, and the collection of trash that has accumulated, especially in the riverbed. So I decided, what can we do about this? People are like, we've complained and complained, and what have we done anything? Okay, well, what can we do about it? So we started looking into it. What can we actually do? We are looking at legislation. We're working with Representative Lewis for legislation that would, because it is still considered a navigable river, even though it's not currently navigable, they don't change that designation apparently. So that is state property, and therefore the county doesn't have the authority to, you know, enforce anything in that area. So our hands were kind of tied. So we are looking at legislation that would maybe open that door to allow us some enforcement authority in the area. But in the meantime, I was like, we're not going to just go down there and kick people out of the riverbed, or, you know, we want to do this in a humanitarian way. So I formed a task force, basically, and invited people from the city and the county and all of the different nonprofits and humanitarian, you know, agencies in Garden City and Finney County. We've had several meetings. It's been wonderful. I cannot tell you how wonderful the response has been by the public. People are so happy to see that something is happening, and people are constantly getting in touch with me, like, how can I be a part of this? What can I do to help? So it's been wonderful. And I, I want to let everybody kind of know that we just had our riverbed cleanup over the weekend. We made the front page of the paper today. That was exciting. We had a great turnout, and that was, it was like above and beyond what I could have even hoped for. We had a lot of volunteers, and that's really why I'm here today, to thank the people who graciously offered to help and continue. And I'll probably miss some people, and I apologize for that, but that doesn't make anyone less important than another. It has been a group effort. We did form a task force, like I said. We came up with the name Unmet Needs Community-Led Empowerment. We are not seeking nonprofit status. We don't want to compete with any of the other nonprofits for funding or, you know, grants or anything like that. We are under the umbrella of Livwell, and what we want to do is just basically what we did. If there is a need, if something arises, that'll go through Livwell. They'll reach out to us, and we'll put a task force into place and, you know, try to see what we can do. But anyway, with regard to the riverbed cleanup, I would like to thank everybody who helped. We had such a great turnout. People, men, women, people with equipment, people with little kids. It was awesome. The American Legion cooked lunch for us. It was really cool. Several places donated equipment. United Rentals, Trinity Equipment, Big L Rentals, Tyler Dynas, Nick Ortner, Darren Miller, Mark and Kathy Sexton, all had equipment there. Some, you know, great big things. Courtney Pruitt in the police department went out ahead of time for us and got some drone footage so that we could know where these encampments are. You know, in the summertime, it's kind of hard to tell what's going on down there. We formed groups that went down and met these people and talked to them to find out what their needs were. That was awesome. Tom Marchant with the GIS with Finney County, he actually on his own time, took his own drone and came down and took some drone footage for us. Finney County Public Works, they're going to haul off the mess that we collected, so that was awesome. Sheriff Steve Martinez in the Finney County Sheriff's Department, they were there, had three officers there to help us. Real men, real leaders. They had a delegation that, that helped. That was awesome. A special recognition I'd like to give to Tyler Tone. He's just a citizen who, he and his son like to spend time four-wheeling in the riverbed, and he's like, what can I do to help clean up that riverbed? I can get equipment. He works for one of the equipment rental. So he was very instrumental in making sure that all happened. Kayla Kneer with the Kansas Statewide Homeless Coalition. She formed the groups that went down and visited with the people and got to know them. She was there with us on cleanup day. Marcy Smith with Catholic Charities was down there with us. Birgit Lemke with Saint Vincent de Paul Society and KDAG, they were down there. They've all been a part of that outreach that met with those people, and they introduced us to the one remaining gentleman in the river. So, and he finally, with, like, at the last minute, right before cleanup day, agreed to go on the list for housing. So, yeah. So as of today, I think we've got everybody, you know, we've helped them find housing or get on the list for housing. We've helped them find jobs. We've helped them, if they needed a phone, they've been able to provide burner phones. Robert Deleon, very good at that process. A lot of needs that we are sort of uncovering, and will probably be coming for the city to see, you know, if there are ways that you can help with that. Lance Rubb, you know, Lance was, he's a member of the Sage Fresh HOA, and they were very concerned about, you know, what's happening out there in their neighborhood. And he's like, we've been trying to get something done, and we just can't get anything done. And I was like, well, I just am not the kind of person that's going to say, can't do it, not my problem. So we figured out a way, and Lance meant he's tireless, and that man has a passion for this community and a big heart. Couldn't have done it without him. I'd also like to thank the members of UNCLE, as we call ourselves, the Unmet Needs Group. I think that is all that I have. I just, just wanted to let you know what's been happening. And if anyone in the community would like to know what they can do to help, we really need to communicate with these people and not just, like, assume, oh, they probably need food. They probably need a camper delivered to the riverbed. They might need a doghouse or a boat. Those are some things that we found in the riverbed. So, and a lot of the things that are down there, people have blamed on the homeless. That's not necessarily the case. I mean, they're responsible for a part of it, but that riverbed has become a dumping ground, and we're, we're working on finding a solution. What can we do? You can't prevent all of it, but at least if we can make somewhat of a difference. But if you do want to know what you can do to help the homeless people or people in need, I would recommend that you contact Livwell. And Livwell will send you to the right place or, or help you to know how that you can participate with us. So, yeah, I've been getting a lot of phone calls. If anybody wants to be a part of UNCLE, reach out to me. My information is available on the county website. And I talked to a gentleman just this morning who would like to maybe rehab a building for a homeless shelter. So those are some exciting things, and we really feel like that we were able to handle a problem that is quite common in the United States, and it's being handled a lot of different ways across the country, some of them not so good. I think we have a real success story here, and I think we can all be proud.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else? All right, moving on to item 6A.
Item 6A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve allowing the mayor to proclaim Tuesday, December 3rd, 2025, as match day in Garden City. I think it would be Tuesday, December 2nd, 2025, as match day in Garden City, Kansas.
I know we have some representatives here. Do you want to say anything?
Good afternoon. My name is Corinne Bogart. I'm with Western Kansas Community Foundation, and we are very excited that this is again match day time. It's our ninth edition of match day, and we have a record number of organizations participating this year. Fifty-five are organizations qualified for match day, and the Community Foundation is hosting it, but I want to emphasize that this is an incredible opportunity for the nonprofits and doing such amazing work in our area, not just Finney County, but also in the counties around us. Best of Kansas Community Foundation has raised $150,000 for the match pool this year, which is another record. In past years, it was $100,000, but with the increase of participating organizations, we decided also to increase the match pool. So what that means is that for donations made between $20 and $2,000 per donor, per organization, the Community Foundation matches the donations to the organizations. It's a proportionate match. It's not one-on-one. That is sometimes a confusion. You run out of donations quickly, so it's proportionate to the total amount that's being raised. So at the end of the campaign, we have a magic spreadsheet. I'm thinking that one of my staff members who is in charge of that magic spreadsheet, and then they calculate how much the percentage is that goes to each organization from the match pool. So technically, each, every organization is eligible to make 50% of the match pool, which would be $75,000, which is a nice bonus at the end of the year. So of course, we try to tap into the season of giving. December 2nd, that match day concludes with an in-person event at Methodist Church in Garden City from 7:00 till 7:00. That's our last day of the campaign. That is also known as Giving Tuesday nationwide. So that is the day, the Tuesday following Thanksgiving, when we hope that people are done with shopping and think of their community again, and what they can do to give back, not just in monetary ways, but also through volunteer work. And we just heard an amazing story about volunteerism, which is so big in our area in Garden City. We're so blessed with so many generous people who give not only from their wallets, but also from their hearts and their time and their talents. So thank you so much, Mayor and Commissioners, for supporting this again with the proclamation. It means a lot. And we are hoping, as a Community Foundation, that we can mobilize a lot of people again, in person, but also online. I want to emphasize that this is also an online giving opportunity. We have a website, matchday.wkcf.org, that is already open, and that closes on December 2nd at midnight. So during that time, anybody in the whole wide world can give to the 55 participating organizations. And that's actually what we've seen in past years. People from all over the country donated. And we are always thinking, it's probably a lot of people who moved away from Finney County in the last year that are still wanting to support our area and our nonprofits. So, yeah, again, we appreciate the support, and we hope that you help us spread the word.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Entertain a motion on this item.
A move that we approve, the mayor to proclaim Tuesday, December, is it 2nd?
2nd.
2nd, 2025 as match day in Garden City, Kansas.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second. Any discussion on this item? None being? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. I'll read the proclamation. Proclamation reads, whereas match day was established as a national day of giving on the Tuesday following Thanksgiving, and whereas match day is a celebration of philanthropy and volunteerism, where people give whatever they are able to give, and whereas match day is a day where citizens work together to share commitments, rally for favorite, favorites, causes, build a stronger community, and think about other people. And whereas it is fitting to proper on match day and on every day to recognize the tremendous impact of philanthropy, volunteerism, and community service in the city of Garden City. And whereas match day is an opportunity to encourage citizens to serve others throughout this holiday season and during other times of the year. Now therefore, I, Roy Cesna, the mayor of Garden City, do hereby proclaim December 2nd, 2025, as match day in the city of Garden City, and encourage all citizens to join together to give back to the community in any way that is personally meaningful. Signed and sealed the 18th day of November, 2025, Roy Cesna, Mayor. We'll get a picture right quick here. You want the group, with everybody in their shirts?
The blue brigade.
Yeah, the blue brigade. You'll stand by.
Come on.
We're even on the stairs.
Let's get there.
Oh.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
I'm so glad you could make it to here.
All right, moving on to item number seven.
Item seven, congratulations to Parks and Rec, or 7A, congratulations. Congratulations to Parks and Recreation Director Tisha Hurd on the occasion of receiving her Certified Park and Recreation Executive Certification, and to Recreation Superintendent Jared Rudy on the occasion of receiving his Certified Park and Recreation Professional Certification. Both of these certifications require prerequisite levels of education and full-time work experience and the applications processed in successfully passing a certification exam. Congratulations, Tisha and Jared, on your accomplishment, your commitment to the Parks and Recreation profession. I'd like to add another item. We completed our city internal United Way campaign, Pace Setter Drive, and our city employees led campaigns. So, we've got a group of employees that kind of decide there are internal pace setters, or kind of decide what our campaign's gonna look like. We get around and talk to each department. United Way agencies join and give some testimony about what they do. And then each pace setter committee member that attends the meeting talks about what United Way means to them. We have a really fun end-of-drive event where there's an opportunity to win prizes. Many of those prizes are donated by local businesses and business partners, corporate partners with the city of Garden City. And our employees pledged for the 2026 year over $57,000.
Was that more than last year?
It was more than last year. Last year was $50,000, and it represented about 10% of the overall community United Way drive. So, hopefully, that bodes well for an even bigger community-wide drive, not just a larger percentage from city employees. So, we're proud of, proud of our workforce certainly, and the work of the committee in having such a fun event and a fun month to do stuff across department lines, but more importantly, raise important dollars for important causes around the community. The remainder of the items under Report of the City Manager are staff reports. If you have any questions on those, we'd be happy to try to answer them.
Any questions for Matt? Okay, moving on to item eight, then.
Meetings of note, several items, busy time of year. Just a note, today, we have the Southwest Kansas Chambers of Commerce hosting a 2025, maybe 26 Legislative Appreciation Dinner in Liberal, Kansas. That event registration begins at 6:00. We're carpooling down. We have two staff members going, and we have five commissioners going, so we're gonna need to find a third, third vehicle to go down to not violate the Kansas Open Meetings Act on our trip, trip down there. So, let's meet at the parking lot about 4:50 to figure out travel logistics. Daniel's gonna drive, I'm gonna drive for sure. But, we've reached out to the chamber to see if we can hitchhike at least one of you in one of their vehicles, but if not, we may need someone to drive. Anything requiring an RSVP, please do that through the city clerk's office. I think that's it for the meetings of note. We're now ready for consideration of the appropriation ordinance. If approved, it would be appropriation ordinance number 2599-2025A.
I move that we approve appropriation ordinance number 2599-2025A.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
I second.
There's been a second. Any discussion on that item? None being? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? That item passed. Item 10.
We're now gonna turn the meeting over to Jared Coleman, and he's got a series of items here that are all sort of interrelated, but the first one is item 10A. The governing body is asked to consider and approve the following ordinance regarding a fee schedule for the city of Garden City. If approved, it would be ordinance number 3033-2025. Jared.
Good afternoon. The city of Garden City staff have been working on compiling a fee schedule to incorporate all fees and rates charged for services provided by the city of Garden City. In conjunction with the finalization of the fee schedule, language and the city's current municipal code is required to be updated. This ordinance provides the authority for the city to adopt an annual fee schedule by resolution and provides updates to applicable language, current aid code to reference the fee schedule for current rates rather than have rates individually dictated throughout the municipal code. Alternatives before you today are that the governing body may approve the ordinance as presented, or the governing body may not approve the ordinance as presented. Staff recommends that governing body approve the ordinance. On this item, there's no fiscal note. I will speak to Martin's concerns. I think I shortchanged when I said the staff have been working on compiling a fee schedule. This is taken by the part of the last year. Each department reviewed their fees compared to other cities, looked at their municipalities, looked at the last dates that these were implemented for changes, and then had discussion on what the appropriation should be. One such factor would be inflation, including the agenda items today. It's a chart that shows the rates with, just inflation and looking at whatever the last date of adoption was, and the dollars that day, what would that be, $25,000? And you can see that most of our rates are still under what inflation will dictate. So, there was quite a bit of analysis done and discussion done to make sure that these rates were, while I do believe they're increasingly going up to be more appropriate for today, there was consideration given to make sure that it's not gonna, you know, blowing your socks off and try to be prudent in what we were suggesting to change, but the hoping that going forward with an annual adoption, we can then articulate smaller changes to stay with what is appropriate rather than kind of long, big swings of the pendulum every 10, 12 years almost. So, I'm happy to answer any questions that the commission may have, but I did wanna just shout out the staff. This was a considerable project. There was a lot of work put into it, a lot of insight from the departments to compile their fees together, discussions with finance staff, discussions with senior staff. This has been a long, long process to make sure that we provide what we feel are appropriate figures.
Any questions for Jared? Just wanna say thank you to the staff. I mean, at the pre-meeting on this topic, you know, there was a lot of good discussion, but a lot of information as well, but just wanna thank staff for all that they've done. I know from my standpoint as a commissioner, over the last couple of years, I, you know, we'd bring fees to us, and I always, I'd always say, "Can we do this kind of annually and look at this?" So, it's great to see that we're, we're starting to move that direction with this. So, that was a comment more instead of a question, but any other comments or questions? Entertain a motion on this, ordinance 3033-2025.
I move we approve ordinance, sorry, ordinance number 3033-2025.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
I second.
There's been a second. Any discussion on this item? None being? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? That item passed.
And then item 10B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the following resolution regarding the fee schedule for the city of Garden City. If approved, this would be resolution number 3212-2025.
The city of Garden City staff have been working on compiling a fee schedule to incorporate all fees and rates charged for services provided by the city of Garden City. This resolution contains the rates for the goods and services provided by the city of Garden City for calendar year 2026. The schedule shows the year of the most recent change to the current rate and incorporates all rates with an updated rate for 2026. Going forward, city staff will review the fee schedule annually and will propose any rate adjustments for the city commission's review near the end of each year with adoption of a resolution establishing the rates for each calendar year. While the fee schedule incorporates most rates for general services of the city of Garden City, it should be noted that applicable rate changes to the city's utility rates for electric, water, wastewater, stormwater, and solid waste will still be brought to the city commission for separate consideration and will be adjusted through separate ordinances. Utility rates effective in 2026 are shown in this fee schedule in Addendum D for informational purposes and are not established by this resolution. Similarly, the fine schedule for the municipal court is established by the municipal court judge. This municipal court fine schedule for 2026 is shown in Addendum C for information purposes but is subject to change of the determination of the municipal court judge. The alternative is before you today that the governing body may approve the resolution as presented, or the governing body may not approve the resolution as presented. Staff recommends the governing body approve the resolution. As a fiscal note, the fee shown in this resolution will take effect January 1, 2026, and the city anticipates increased revenues in 2026 due to increases in some rates established in this fee schedule, and those will be incorporated in the revised 2026 budget when we get that done.
Any questions for Jared on this one? Entertain a motion then on resolution 3212-2025.
I move to approve resolution number 3212-2025.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second, but I did have a question, so.
Any question? Any discussion?
Discussion now. So, underneath, I believe, in the, in the draft fee schedule, the city clerk has listed, there was a duplication. I'm sorry, I didn't write it down, but I didn't know what... The city clerk had a duplication in one of their items as the similar to the one in the police. So, I was just making, yeah, for records, yes.
So, the, the language is the same, or identified that departments that continually do, or, or often, so that a citizen looking in that arena will find the rate, though it is repetitive. It's under police, municipal court, and then clerk, I believe, for the three areas.
Okay, all right, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that that was clarified, so thank you. That's all I had.
Any other questions for Jared? Or other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? That item passed.
Item 10C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the following ordinance regarding the court costs for municipal court for the city of Garden City. If approved, this would be ordinance number 3034-2025.
The city of Garden City staff have been working on compiling a fee schedule to incorporate all fees and rates charged for services provided by the city of Garden City. In conjunction with the finalization of the fee schedule, the code section for court costs for the municipal court is required to be updated. This ordinance provides updated language for municipal code regarding establishment or court costs for the municipal court and updates the code reference for such language. Primarily, this one brought for you today because the reference, the 42-1, that was court cost is what we're using for the resolution for the fee schedule. Between now and the end of the year, we'll bring other items back that changed the other language of section 42 to similarly adjust for this, but this was the one needed to be done today. The alternatives before you today are that the governing body may approve the ordinance as presented, or the governing body may not approve the ordinance as presented. Staff recommends the governing body approve the ordinance, and there is no fiscal note with this item.
Any questions for Jared? Entertain a motion then on ordinance 3034-2025.
I move that we approve ordinance number 3034-2025 as presented.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
I second.
There's been a second. Any discussion on this item? None being? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? That item passed.
Item 10D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an ordinance adjusting retail water and sewer rates as identified in the water, wastewater, and drainage utility rate study conducted by professional engineering consultants, PA. If approved, this would be ordinance number 3035-2025.
At the March 4th, 2025, meeting of the city commission, the governing body adopted ordinance number 3008-2025, establishing the rates for the water and wastewater utility beginning April 1st, 2025 through March 31st, 2030. To align with the adoption of the fee schedule for the city of Garden City with effective dates of new rates beginning January 1 of each year, this ordinance incorporates an adjustment to the effective dates of the previously adopted rates from April 1 of each year to January 1 of each year. The alternatives are that the governing body may approve the ordinance as presented, or the governing body may not approve the ordinance as presented. Staff recommends the governing body approve the ordinance. As a fiscal note, adjusting the effective dates of water and wastewater rates from April 1 to January 1 is estimated to result in additional revenues in 2026 of approximately $50,000.
Any questions for Jared on this item? Entertain a motion on ordinance 3035-2025.
I move we approve ordinance number 3035-2025.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
I second.
There's been a second. Any discussion on this item? None being? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? That item passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 10E, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an ordinance adjusting the solid waste rates. If approved, it would be ordinance number 3036-2025.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Back on May 20th of 2025, the governing body reviewed the solid waste cost of service study data during the pre-meeting. Then on June 3rd, 2025, the governing body directed staff to create an ordinance changing the solid waste collection fees effective January 1, 2026, to what was recommended in the cost of service study. SCS engineers completed the cost of service study in May of 2025 by reviewing the solid waste department's responsibilities for collecting commercial and residential trash within the city of Garden City. This included a financial analysis to review the long-term economic sustainability of the solid waste operations with the anticipated growth in Garden City and create a management plan and rate structure that would allow the city to fully recover the cost of providing the trash collection services. This ordinance reflects those changes. Your alternatives today are the governing body may approve the ordinance as presented, or number two, the governing body may not approve the ordinance. Staff recommends governing body approve the ordinance as presented, and if the, if so approved, the fiscal note, the annual, annual fiscal impact will be an increase of approximately $1.2 million to the solid waste department beginning in January 2026. And part of that, to remember, covered the part of the fleet vehicles that we had to replace. So, anyhow, happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mike on this item? Entertain a motion on 3036-2025 ordinance.
I'll make the motion to approve ordinance number 3036-2025.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second. Any discussion on this item? None being? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? That item passed. Thank you.
Item 12A, the governing body is asked to provide direction regarding AFAK funding.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. On August 19th, 2025, the governing body authorized the release of an additional round of AFAK funding in the amount of $200,000 with the focus on the following city commission goals: youth leadership engagement, support healthcare providers, co-responder program, and assist in the development of private childcare options. On October 21st, 2025, the governing body awarded $137,500 to the top four scoring agencies based on the newly created scoring rubric. Big Brothers Big Sisters submitted an application for $23,338 during that process but was not funded. At the November 4th, 2025 city commission meeting, Tammy Wilson, executive director and CEO of Big Brothers Big Sisters, addressed the city commission asking for reconsideration of the AFAK awards outlining the urgency for funding as it relates to Big Brothers Big Sisters, and provided the city commission the attached documents. Ms. Wilson shared the severity of the current financial position of Big Brothers Big Sisters and the possibility of going out of business and/or not being able to cover payroll expenses for the month of November. Staff have identified four options for the city commission to consider. Option one, the city commission could take up the agenda item that was considered at the October 21st, 2025 meeting, and provide direction to fund one or more additional agencies. There is $62,500 available in funds that were identified for that round that could be awarded, or the city commission could award funds in excess of that and further spend down fund balance in the special alcohol fund. Option two, the city commission could direct staff to initiate another round of funding with more explicit direction as to the expectations about funds are to be prioritized. This could be in addition to the round that is anticipated to open in mid-December that is completed annually. Option three, the city commission could direct staff to advance funding to Big Brothers Big Sisters for one or more years and subsequently reduce the total grant amount in that year or years by the advanced amount and remove Big Brothers Big Sisters from consideration during that annual process. Since 2019, the city has opened two rounds of AFAK funds at the beginning of the year when the community grant and art grant are also available. The first round are for small grant requests, $6,000 or less, and is reviewed and recommended by staff. The second round are for larger grant requests, more than $6,000, and is reviewed by an external committee. In addition to the annual process, the city has also released an additional round of AFAK funds in 2023, 2024, and 2025. This has been to spend down fund balance that has accumulated in the special alcohol fund over the years. The chart below shows funding for Big Brothers Big Sisters since 2019. As you can see in this chart, the low year in terms of funding was in 2021 with $6,000. The high year was in 2024 with $31,000, for an average at $21,425 over the course of those, that, that timeframe. Finally, it should be noted that for round one and two, the standard annual process, the city and county split funding. The city pays 90% of the award amount, and the county pays 10% of the award amount. For the additional rounds, the city has paid 100% of those costs. As a result, if the city commission selects option three, the city will work with the county on the cost split. Option four, the city commission could maintain the AFAK funding award made at the October 21st, 2025 meeting, and direct staff to proceed with the annual AFAK grant process that is anticipated to open in mid-December. The alternatives before you this afternoon are, one, that... The alternatives before you this afternoon are, one, the governing body may provide funding to one or more additional agencies that submitted an application for the additional round of AFAC funds that were considered at the October 21st, 2025 city commission meeting. Alternative two, the governing body may direct staff to release another round of AFAC funds. Alternative three, the governing body may direct staff to advance Big Brothers Big Sisters an award and remove them from consideration during the annual AFAC award process for which an advance was, an advanced award was made. Or alternative four, the governing body may direct staff to proceed with the annual AFAC grant processes, process that is anticipated to open in mid-December. Staff has no recommendation as it relates to this item, and as it relates to the fiscal note, there is approximately $215,000 in available fund balance within this fund. Be happy to answer any questions you all may have.
Any questions for Danielle? We do have Tammy Wilson here from Big Brothers Big Sisters.
Thank you so much for considering this. I really greatly appreciate it. I wanted to update you, since the last meeting, we did get one grant reimbursement back from our federal grant money. So we were able to pay staff in the middle of the month. We're still short for December 1st. We did submit a federal Title II grant that we should be hearing about in December. We submitted a regular Western Kansas Community Foundation grant that we should be hearing about also in December. We have started our fundraisers, we're doing our virtual turkey trot, our Christmas by candlelight event, and we are participating in Match Day. And KIUL radio station is running PSAs for us. We've had volunteers and former littles that have gone in and reported PSAs for us, asking for funds. So we really appreciate your help in this. I am concerned about, we actually need the extra funds this year, and we need them because our costs went up due to our national office raising the expectations for the agencies. They've actually closed over 100 small agencies. And we do not want to lose our agency here. Art board is working very hard to put together some plans for both, well, we've been implementing the short-term plan, but also to create a long-term plan to increase our board, to create a fund development committee on our board that's specifically to go out and work on multi-year gifts so that we can develop this. We are not in this position in the future. I've been the director here for 31 years, and I only come in here one other time. This is very difficult for me because I know that if you choose not to fund us, we may not be here. Or if you choose to give us money now and not allow us to apply for additional funding in the spring, that's going to put us in a bind as well. I also wanted to mention our office. We closed our office and sorry, we were going to work from home to save our rent and utilities. And the county had an office space for us over at the community corrections. Since we are a blueprint model for delinquency prevention, that was a good fit. So the county very generously is allowing us to stay there for the next six months. We'll see what happens after that, but for the time being, they, they helped us out with office space, so we really greatly appreciate that. I can answer any questions that you may have. I did have, I did have one of the United Way board members look over all of our financials. And he said that it looked like we were short because the national office is not sending our grant reimbursements through in a timely manner, not because we weren't being diligent about getting our funding. We are also a little bit short, however. But that was, that was what his take was, I guess, on, after looking at our budgets, so.
So Tammy, if funded, would this have to go to your national office and then back to you, or would it, could it go directly to you? Okay.
It goes directly to us.
Okay.
We have federal grant money that we get through Big Brothers Big Sisters of America, and they're just not very good about. We just got September's reimbursement. And we've paid people September, October, November, so they're just behind.
Any other questions for either Danielle or Tammy? On this item? Any discussion amongst the commission?
I would kind of like to discuss. I'm not, I mean, when I asked a question for this to be brought back to us as far as recommendations, I didn't really necessarily mean for it to come back into AFAC funds portion because that, to me, that process has been awarded and approved. So I guess my thinking and my, I thought my question then was to bring something back that was maybe an emergency funding process that we could allow for a one-time, you know, ask to the agency on, and, and, and that was, I guess, that was a question to everyone was, I don't know what's out there. I don't know what can be done. I just knew that the AFAC funding was approved. And we asked the committee to do their process and reviewing, you know, with the rubrics and whatnot. So to me, they'd done their job. I mean, I guess that was my whole ask on this to be brought up at this, this commission meeting. So was somebody else's thought different than mine?
No, I think that makes sense to, to see it in that way. I do think, though, that just the nature of that conversation is going to lead to this simply from the fact that it is AFAC-related and that there doesn't seem like there's anything else in our general budget which would allow for us to have any option at all. So, I mean, it seemed natural that the conversation led this way, although like I can recognize that. I do wonder, though, I think that what this conversation seems is like very policy-related to, right, is that it's kind of up to us to consider. Yeah, I guess I would like to hear a general gauge of, of where our logic here is on, on how we can sort through this.
I mean, I think one thing you could do is, you know, unless you could fully fund something, then if we couldn't really fully fund it, we only had $62,000 left. St. Catherine's was $114,014, so obviously we couldn't fully fund. And there's really not a way to go back and ask. But if we use that $62,000, we could skip over that, that award because we couldn't make it, and we could fund several other awards with, because we have scores showing, you know, you could do that. And so that way you could spend down those AFAC funds that were already approved. I agree. I don't think there is a place in, in the city budget to do a one-time funding. I mean, I really appreciate their proactiveness. I mean, and they're engaged and they're doing the things that they have to do. And, and again, you know, a lot of these things are due to circumstances beyond their control. And so, I mean, I could see us considering doing that. I don't think that violates the purpose or the, or the intent of the AFAC funding. So you could skip over the, we couldn't, since we can't make St. Catherine's award of 114,410, or I guess they, they requested 128,2543, we could skip over that, but then you would actually be able to fund several smaller awards. Actually, Real Men, Real Leaders, which would be the next score, Big Brothers Big Sisters, and then there'd be one other one, I think, Stepping Stone Shelter, I think it was. But I'm thinking, that's one way that you could do this in the sense that if we couldn't make the full award, that we could actually, you know, step over some of these awards, because again, we don't know if they can do their program unless it's fully funded. Where this situation, we do know that these funds would be appropriated in the intent that they, they had purposed, so.
I guess that's kind of, what we talked about at the, that's kind of changing the rules of the game then from what we talked about when we made the decision to approve the allocation. Because we talked about
True.
how they scored the rubric. And what those scores were. They came to us, because they didn't, you know, we, they came to us and explained why they funded how they did, but then we turned around and said, well, but we're going to follow the rubric and follow the top scores and give the funding to all, except the one, the one score because
Wasn't enough.
it wasn't enough, one. Two, it was, it wasn't, it was a change in the funding that they were wanting, I mean, what they, what they requested and what the funding was going to be approved was different. So we said, we're going to fund, I think, the top
Four.
four, compared to the top five. So that's changing, that's changing what we discussed and how we were going to approve moving forward with, I mean, we said we're kind of changing now, trying to skip over things instead of saying, this is how we're going to follow.
Yeah. So I'm giving an option.
I'm giving an option. No, I get it.
If, if you feel, you know, I mean, I, I think the program is worthy, and if you feel that if they're, if we're looking for a way to fund that, I mean, I only see the AFAC funds as the only way to fund it. Other than, because you can't, I don't see another, thinking through all the funds in the city, I don't see another place that, that's available. I mean, I do appreciate some of the things that they're doing with Match Day and those things, and hopefully that will be a.
So I, to give a question for Tammy here.
Go ahead.
I, I think I'm a little confused on the budget here. Because the calculations I have in the red are those in which are required changes made to the Big Brothers Big Sisters bylaws. And I think the total number that you listed there is 50,073. And I kind of added up the red numbers there, it kind of left me around 36. So all of that to say, as context for this question of, if for the budget where AFAC is budgeted in at line 4135, and then this additional round that was requested, was there any movement to, like, in consideration of the AFAC wasn't really on the radar in general at the beginning of the year, or even mid of the year, like AFAC, this third round, it was, was not on the radar. So I guess I'm wondering what steps were taken to mitigate that, given that this was a third round that I think we didn't decide until later in the year. The summer-ish was when we kind of talked about this third additional round.
I don't know what you're, I'm sorry, I'm not sure what you're asking me. The numbers that you added up in red were the numbers that were increased from our national office. But the, that also included, it added up to about $50,000 because our rent was, is not in red either, but if we take that, because we were not paying rent before when we were in the school district building. So that's why. And we did apply for, we applied for the first round and we were awarded the first round. And then we applied for the last, the leadership funding also. And is that where?
Yes, so for the second round, you were awarded, Danielle, can you reference that real fast? Sorry.
Yep, $22,600 for 2025.
Yeah, so for the total two rounds of those.
Oh, okay, so you're doing the first, okay, sorry.
So first and second.
I was thinking the first was the 6,000, okay.
The first.
6,000 and then the second, yes. So, yeah, I applied for both of those and I got those. And then I applied for the third round for the leadership funding because we really needed the extra funding. And we also had reached out and were invited to apply for funding from the Taco Bell Foundation, which does high school mentoring, both having community members mentor high school students and then having high school students mentor other little kids that needed a mentor. And so we were awarded some from that foundation. And one of the things that we wanted to do with the third round of AFAC funding, the leadership portion, was to show the Taco Bell Foundation that, yes, we did get additional funding for that because if we can show that, then they will raise the amount that we get from them next year, and that's external funding. For programs that we're doing already, we just were expanding them. So that was part of that. And our mentoring programs are, to the letter of the law, alcohol, alcohol prevention programs for kids. We're also a blueprint model for delinquency prevention, so.
My question for Danielle or Matt or whoever, on option two, how fast could we realistically get that to happen? How long would it take for us to do another round? What would that process look like?
So the way that we've done that the last couple of times is we have brought to you all for consideration the application itself, along with the scoring rubric, so that you all can make any additional changes that you all wanted to make. So we, your next city commission meeting would be December 2nd. We typically have those out for folks to apply for, typically four to six weeks. We try to extend it out a little bit longer over the holidays. Then we've got to bring those back, get it to whatever group is going to review all of those applications. That usually takes a week or two to get those back, give people time to review them, and then find a, a meeting where that group can get together. And then we find kind of the next city commission meeting that works. So the way that, the timing and the cadence of that, that has happened over the last couple of years at least as it relates to our typical AFAC, our typical community grant and the art grant, because they all follow the same timeline, is we bring those to you all at one of your December meetings. Those are typically due back in January. The boards kind of meet in early February, and then we shoot for either that last meeting in February or the first meeting in March. And again, that just really depends on, on timing and how those Tuesdays fall in those particular months. So it is not an overly quick process. Now, we could reduce how long folks have to fill out those applications, but that's, that's how, that's how they've run the last several years.
Thank you.
So about a 60-day turnaround time, you're saying?
At least, yeah. Yeah.
I have a question, I guess. Can you make an exception? I don't know if you can make an exception because this is an emergency or not. I don't know.
Well, that's a policy question that we're trying to figure out as a, as a city commission right now, so. I guess, back to option number two. I mean, we, you're going to open it up in mid-December anyway, right? I mean, it's, that's just typically what we do.
Right.
Correct. If the governing body wanted to, kind of the intent of this option was if you guys wanted to do something above and beyond. So typically, that round is $100,000. Half of that are for those smaller grants requests, so $6,000 or less. And then half of that is set aside for those large requests, so more than $6,000. This, if you wanted to, you could say, look, we want to do something that maybe is a little bit more expedited, specifically focused on this one or two particular items instead of utilizing the rubric that you all have, that you all utilized for this last round. So if you wanted to do something like this, that's kind of the, the mechanism to do that, to say, okay, I know this kind of additional round went out looking at those four different goals, for example. You all could come back and say, we don't want to look at all four of those goals. We just want applications specifically related to one of those goals. So, and, and you could do that for an amount that is different than that typical $100,000 that has gone out the last, the last several years.
Did you have a comment?
So here are some of my thoughts, and I, I mean this in a, in my best to be empathetic towards all nonprofits in general. It's like, first, it's like, we see nonprofits in the current state of everything as every nonprofit is on fire. And some nonprofits are more on fire than other nonprofits. And the question is, which fire is worth putting out? Which fire can we do our best to kind of minimize, and which fire can we do our best to, like, if there's a massive fire in this nonprofit, what is the role of the city? What is the role of the commission? And I think that offering help in a lot of different ways is very graceful as a city commission, but I also want to maintain the integrity of all nonprofits that is within our community. Because I think that they are all have some sort of fire that they're, they're going through in which Because I think that they are all, have some sort of fire that they're going through, in which, like, in very different comparison. But I think for me, like, one option that I do see is like, hey, like, what is the potential of floating a loan? And so, like, when all these other grants come through, like, it allows you to come back above the surface. Because I think as, as this fire grows, it's natural in any situation for another fire to come up too. And, which makes it very difficult, I think, to us as a commission, is that, that at this point, we're just running around putting fires. And that just is not a good process for the organization as a whole. So for me, it makes it very difficult to see this really big fire and not help, but also to see that, what that would cause to the integrity of all the other nonprofits in our community.
Well, I do want to say, you know, I know that this is a situation, and again, I think it's the process, and again, you know, how we're going to do the protocol. And I think, you know, for the thirty-one years, I think you've been successful, and I mean, there are things outside of your control. But again, I think this idea of stepping outside of a grant cycle and outside of the AFAK funds, which are naturally. I am, I am extremely glad that the Big Brothers and Big Sisters have been funded so many times, and I appreciate all the background information. I, I think the hard thing here is, again, I, I do like the option two, where you reopen back up. You know, and then that way, you, you could, you give people the chance to reapply, and know this doesn't solve the problem at this point, you know, for them. I mean, I'm believing several of the things are going to come through, and then match day will be extremely successful. But I mean, that would at least get an opportunity, and you could maybe move that sixty-two thousand dollars, hundred thousand plus the sixty-two that we would like to. So we might have a bigger pool. But again, I think giving sixty days minimum is important, so that, you know, all these other people who are. And most nonprofits, I, I mean, I think there could be a characterization that they're on fire, but most nonprofits are very successful and they think they're very well-run. I mean, I think they work really hard to make sure to stay solvent. I mean, Western Kansas Community Foundation, I mean, I don't even know, I think they're over three, thirty million or something. So I mean, I see incredible opportunities. And again, I want to compliment you on your work for, I mean, year after year after year, it's meeting budget, making all these different things that you have been able to do. So I empathize with, I mean, Big Brothers and Big Sisters is an incredible program. I was involved early on, and I, I mean, loved it, I mean, my little eyes, you know, still think of them every once in a while. You know, but that's the thing I think is really important, and I mean, but again, what the city can do and the city commission can do. I think option two, as Commissioner Landgraf has talked about, maybe that is maybe the best options that we can move forward, so.
Yeah, and I, I think it's important, that's, I mean, that's honestly our responsibility is to kind of explore solutions and, and, you know, keep vital, life-changing services alive. And so this need would be going to benefit those, and we all know that it's going to our kids. And that's, I mean, that's a big role for us to make decisions on. So, if, I'd never thought about the way that you brought it up, Commissioner Andrew, on, I guess, overstepping somebody, and then because they're not fully funded. And then that would help kind of quicken the process of allocating those funds to those underneath that, who have qualified for the points and the rubrics crew, and the rubrics from the last decision. I mean, it's an option, right? We, we have that, we have that option, and, and that's one to discuss. We have the number two option that we can also discuss on, you know, putting another round out. One question I have on that is, what's that level of amount going to be? Is it the traditional six thousand or six thousand above on that model? Or do we allocate a different, you know, cap rate for those funds to get delivered out? I don't know, to me, it's, it's a, and like I mentioned about an emergency fund. We've came, we, there's been certain, or several members in the community, stakeholders, whatnot, whoever have come and asked us for assistance in projects. That's for the betterment of the community. This is a little bit different because it's for the benefit of our kids. And so I see the need as a little bit greater than those services where it goes to a building or brick and mortar or infrastructure. To me personally, I think just the responsibility that we have to our kids to service them, whether it's healthcare, whether it's just being there to push them on, egg them on, to continue to be successful. That's important to me, that's, that's what I see as a crucial decision in what this is. If we don't do something, which I don't think we are, we're not at that position where we're not going to just drop it. I think we're, we're just at the point where we need to discuss what's the best option to move forward with, with serving these kids.
I have a question on option three. So it's kind of been discussed on option three of an immediate type of, kind of, forward giving, but on that kind of giving back in the future rounds. Would we be able to split that amount into multiple future rounds? That way, it's not as much of a big hit right away. Because right now, as is, it would make, essentially, it's just delaying it to the next round. But would we be able to do it as, or it's like, two thousand or three thousand dollars for future rounds? Then obviously, if the future commission decides they don't like this and they just want to forgive it, they could forgive it as well. Would that be a potential option?
Yes, you could structure that however, however you wanted to. We tried to leave it as, as broad, so that the commission could have those discussions and use whatever discretion they felt was appropriate.
I don't think the fund has sufficient balance that you could advance more than one year if you wanted to. Which would make it the period of time to absorb the head of staying out of future cycles. You know, your, the benefit is cash infusion now, the, you know, yeah. If you do multiple years, you could have more time to figure out the problem, the problem later. You know, the risk at that is you advance several years and then the organization, the organization goes away anyway. In a short period of time, and then, you know, that, that would, in retrospect, look real wise when you did it. But, you know, could be helpful if it, if it works. I do think it's important to maybe understand why the, why all the options point towards AFAK money. It is, it is a process. I would agree that Big Brothers, Big Sisters, historically, because they've received money almost every year, I think, in my memory of working with the city of Garden City. The, the, they qualify as eligible prevention, it's, these are programmatic funds, there's rules. Now, you all add rules in the, you know, in the process of the rubric and all that. And we adjust those from time to time. But in general, from a statute perspective, you're not making a donation. You're putting alcohol prevention and treatment funds towards an alcohol prevention and treatment option in the community. So, AFAK funds give you the flexibility to get as creative as you want within the confines of, of AFAK. You do not have the ability to do that, Jennifer can go into, if you're interested. You can't take general fund money and, and go make a donation without meeting several, several points. So, you know, if there were expectations that you would have a general fund option, we can go through and talk about what that would be. That would be much more cumbersome to Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and my guess, Tammy wouldn't want the money, given the strings that would be attached to that. We would have to oversight of those funds, Jennifer can go in and list, but we can't just make a thirty thousand dollar donation to Big Brothers, Big Sisters without us having some operational control over how that thirty thousand dollars is spent.
Yeah, it's a two-pronged process. So the first is public purpose, which you can easily do with a nonprofit. But the second prong is that the city has to remain in tire control over all funds that you donate. So that's pretty difficult to do and to, to maintain to the citizens that you in fact still have control over those funds if they've been moved to a nonprofit, no matter what the nonprofit is. Because we would have to be in control of what they did with those. So, that's why donations are not done by cities.
You know, you talk about, so these are for alcohol and tobacco, you know, the control of those substances. So I'm curious, are there any funds, like, in the police department that, that would be available, any grant funding? I know we, I love the explorers program, I don't want to take any money from that. But I'm saying, are there options that, because the thing is, I'm concerned about if we, if we give, if we pre-fund, and all of a sudden you obligate, then she's not able to, eligible to apply. Is this going to, in subsequent years, just kind of kick it down the road? But I don't know if there's anything in the police department that would be available for youth activities, other than the explorers, which I don't want to make sure to touch that money, but.
Maybe not the, sorry. I was just saying, maybe not in PD in particular, but I do think there is something at the county level that, that is worth considering. Like, if we've opened this space on a certain amount in which we have excess, then the county would have a similar amount. In AFAK funding.
Yeah, they have AFAK funds as well. And when we've had our special, when we have our regular rounds, you all approve it, and let's say somebody gets ten thousand dollars.
Right.
And award. We'll go present that at the subsequent meeting to Fannie County. They'll pledge their proportionate amount, which is, we, we round off to ninety-ten. And so nine thousand dollars are going to come out of the city's AFAK account, one thousand dollars will come out of the Fannie County's account. Now, when we've had our three special rounds, three, right, twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-five, there has been no county spend down. So, it would be a giant pool of money, but if, if those went down at this, kind of, we're spending down at the same rate. Proportionate rate, yeah, thank you. I would say they would have somewhere between thirty, fifty thousand dollars to play with to come back down to where we are. But, I mean, that's a, that's a decision they can make, of how they spend their money. Is there a, is there a fund somewhere else? Again, if it were in the police department, it would be general fund money. Now, if it were programmatic though, if there was a definition of, this needs to go towards something like Big Brothers, Big Sisters would qualify for. That would get you around probably the requirement that Jennifer's speaking out. But there's nothing that's got a two-hundred-and-forty-thousand-dollar cash balance.
No, no, no.
I mean, you know. I think, I think the two questions before the commission, it's kind of two hurdles to get over. One, do you want to provide additional assistance beyond what you've already provided in twenty-twenty-five to Blue, Big Brothers, Big Sisters? If you get over that hurdle as a group, then it is, how do we do that with the AFAK money? Do we want to make that? Do we just want to award a, a, a amount, just pick an amount and award it? Do we want to go back and reexamine it and some other items in the recent round? Do we want to create a new round? If we do create a new round, what do we want the rules of the game to be? The how can get real, can get as complicated as you want to make it, or as easy as you want to make it. It's up to what you all feel comfortable with, a majority of you feel comfortable with. I think the first hurdle you need to get, get over is, is kind of, do you, do you want to do it? And then figure out how you're going to do it after that.
Can I make one more comment real quick?
Yes.
Okay. In your packet of information that you had, I provided, we evaluate our kids that are in our program every, at the end of each semester. We also provide grant, our case management support for every single match every month. My case manager is currently putting over two hundred contacts in that she had to do last week. And so, our program, one of the reasons that it's designated a prevention program is because it is evidence-based. Like I said, it does meet the letter of the law. And every year, for as long as I can remember, so I'm going to say maybe twenty-five years of the thirty-one that I've been here, that we were doing this. Ninety-eight to a hundred percent of the kids that were in our program were able to avoid alcohol use. That's extremely effective. And if you look at all the other statistics on there, there's nothing below, on the top part, there's nothing below ninety-six percent on there. Or ninety-four percent, I'm sorry, ninety-four percent on there. They were able to make better, ninety-four percent were able to make better decisions. Ninety-eight percent improved their self-confidence. Ninety-eight percent were able to avoid delinquency. Ninety-eight percent, let's see, I'm going to go back up here. Ninety-five percent performed well in school. Seventy percent of the kids improved their grades. Some of them, sixty-four percent improved in reading and fifty-seven percent improved in math. Those are extremely effective. This is an extremely effective program that we have in our community, and I absolutely don't want to lose it. It's very difficult for me to stand up here, not because, because I will do absolutely whatever it takes. Even if you donated tax dollars and there was a string on it and I had to come in here every single day and give a report on every penny that we spent where. And I would do that, because this is important. The kids in my program can't speak up for themselves. They can't. And I'm here doing that, and I'm not willing to throw any of them away. They need us. They need the support of our city and our county and everyone else here that can give it. Because they are absolutely awesome kids, every single one of them. And they need our help. So, if you want to look at those statistics, they are in your packet. But, an evidence-based prevention program actually changes behavior, short-term and long-term. It's not just changing knowledge or reading something. And I can tell you, you know, everybody in this room knows, for example, if you smoke cigarettes, you know, all the things that it's going to do to you. Or if you overeat, all those things, and not exercise, all those things it's going to do to you. If you're prone to smoking or overeating, are you still going to do that? Probably. But, if you have somebody there that is there because they want to be every single week, and not because they're being paid to. And they're the only one that's doing that for you, that's a really powerful, that's a really powerful relationship in a child's life. A lot of the kids in our program don't have that anywhere else. We're the ones that are there. And we're there because our volunteers want to be there, not because they're being paid to be there. Our program's really cost-effective. If you look at, you know, I don't know how much it costs to do child therapy now, I think it's two hundred dollars an hour or something. And I'm not saying our mentors are therapists, but it costs about a thousand dollars for a year for a child to be in our program. This is an emergency situation, if it wasn't, I wouldn't be here. So, if there's anything you can do right away, I, please, I'm begging you.
Any other questions or comments? So, I guess, kind of looking at this, option two and option four are kind of the same. I mean, I mean, because even, like you said, even if we do kind of an emergency. If we try to open it up and do an emergency-type funding with explicit direction, it would still take time to get that. And then we'd be opening up the next round, actually in mid-December, so we're kind of behind the eight ball. And, I mean, it would take, you'd have to bring it to the next commission meeting if we did something like that. That'd be a pretty quick turnaround time.
I, I do think option four is more of, we'll maintain with what occurred on our decision on October twenty-first, as opposed to, yeah.
Because this is a competitive grant process, and so, I mean, to not make it a competitive grant process, which it's been for all these years. But I mean, I understand that the turnaround time is sixty days, and this is an emergency situation, but I, I do think option four might be.
Because option three would set kind of, if we did that, that would set a precedent for this program, and then we would, we would, I don't know how we would go down that road, is the thing. That, that would be my concern on option three.
So I think for myself, based on the question of, like, the two-pronged question, the first is like, is it the direction of the commission to offer financial assistance? And for myself, I think that, one, since it's coming from an AFAK funding, I think that is allocated for this grant process. And so I would, for myself, I would maintain it that way. But I am open to financial assistance in the terms of a loan or. But I am open to financial assistance in the terms of a loan or some sort of way that provides you enough ample time and the credential to receive all the other funding because this third round was in addition to the other funding that was already provided.
I think it'd be hard to set the precedent to loan nonprofits' dollars and make them, you know, become, make basically the city a liability on their balance sheet. So, I mean, I think the loan would be really hard. If, if we make the decision to give, to have the money, then I, then I say we award the money, you know? But I think making a nonprofit, you know, the city a liability on their, on their, you know, accounts payable or when you get this money, and I think the danger there is, you know, other things could happen that, you know, they could not pay the money back, or they might not get it awarded again, you know? I mean, so I think that would be a hard, that'd be a hard, that'd be a precedent, too, that would, would be hard to, to maintain, so.
We're not allowed to do that. We're not allowed to take a loan, so.
I don't think so.
From our national office.
Yeah, I just can't imagine.
Well, we're not a bank, so it isn't a loan.
Right, yeah.
It wouldn't be a violation of what you are prohibited to do. It would be an advance on your 2026 award, which isn't a loan. I mean, it was, the expectation isn't that it would be paid back. It would be, that it would be paid early.
That makes more sense if it's made that way, but a loan would be.
And that, that's along the lines with option three, though, right? Where it's, they would have to then not ask for any more funding in '26.
Correct. You're advancing them to 2020. You're paying them now for the 2026, or 2026 and 2027, or whatever the commission would fancy. You're giving that to them now to obey the cash flow concerns, you know, and, you know, hopefully they're, I mean, look, if the city commission's going to be the responsible party to settle up, the national office being slow to pay them, I don't know that that's a liability that you want to take on for this organization or all organizations. Hopefully that works itself out. That wouldn't be any fun at all, but I, you know, a temporary solution to that would be advancing on the money because ultimately they would catch up and they wouldn't be waiting on, what Tammy say, like August's payment still hasn't come in. Now, if that's going to be a problem in perpetuity, then it's going to be a problem for Big Brothers Big Sisters in perpetuity. Probably poised to have this conversation every year.
Hmm hmm.
Our long-term plan is to create, like I said, is to expand our board and do some capacity building. And so hopefully, we're not in this position anymore in the future. So whether they're slow or not, giving us our grant payments, our reimbursements back.
So then option four is, can you, can you explain that a little bit in depth?
Sure. So option four is intended to be kind of the status quo option. So that is, we would release the AFAC process as we release the community grant and the art grant in kind of mid, mid to late December, have those back mid to late January, and go through those typical processes that we've been going through over the last couple of years. In, option two is intended to be different from that. That would be above and beyond kind of that status quo process that we've done and do a more direct, more specific process just for one or two purposes that the commission would want to see those funds be utilized for. That could probably be a little bit more expedited than what kind of our typical, typical process has been over the last several years. And I should add, too, with option four, one of the things that we are looking at, because to Matt's point, we put out $100,000 as the total amount that is able to be awarded every year, but actually the expenses on the city side is only $90,000. So that's part of what has built up the fund balance over the years, is that we've got an additional $10,000 that we budget that we don't, we don't spend. And so one of the things that we're looking at is whether or not there is a willingness, and the county's got to agree, if we want to maintain the 90-10 split, to increase the amount for next year and have that be part of the recommendation to you all. But we also need to verify that the county hasn't also done something similar and had some other way that they've utilized those AFAC funds over the years, as I'm sure their fund balance is growing at a commensurate rate with what, with what ours has grown at. So that, that may be part of option four regardless. We don't know what that number is yet, so I didn't want to put that in there. We're still going back and forth on that.
Entertain a motion on this item.
I move to direct staff to proceed with the annual AFAC grant process that anticipated to open in mid-December, which is option four.
There's been a motion on option four to maintain the AFAC funding award made at the October 21st, 2025 meeting. And direct staff to proceed with the annual AFAC grant process that was anticipated to open in mid-December. Is there a second to that? I'll make a second to it. Any, any discussion on that item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Nay.
Item is, did not pass. Well, we're down to three.
Yeah.
Or we can modify. I guess we got, I guess we got across the first hurdle, like Matt was saying. We want to fund, I guess we want to fund, but now how do we want to, how do we want to proceed then?
I want to fund, but I want to do it according to the matrix, so.
Yeah.
I mean, I've already offered that, and so that's how I would like to do it. I think it's, it's a fair, it doesn't make anyone else go back and recreate all these proposals, but I do think, to honor the organization that went ahead and scored all of these, I think we do have those. I mean.
So if we do that, and Big Brothers Big Sisters applies again, and it seems that with the note, option four, with the same rubric, they're still going to score a zero?
No, they didn't score a zero.
They scored, they scored 30.
They scored 30, they scored 20.
29, 28.
Sorry. So then if that's the case, then is?
They would be funded this, they would be funded this round, and they would, I mean, then they'd have the opportunity to go ahead and do that in December, so.
Okay.
So you're saying go with option two? Is that what you're, what you're alluding to then?
Well, option two is, I mean, I don't know how you would award it, but. It doesn't, I think option.
I think you're creating, I think what you're alluding to is kind of going back and revisiting the rubric, the scores, and making a, making a supplemental award off of, off of the round, the round three that we just did. You're going back and reconsidering your total award amount. And, I mean, the group would need to work through making the sausage again up here of who's going to get what, which, what I'm hearing is you're going to go back through that list now and identify who, who else you want to award money to based on the last round of applications. Is that right? That's what I'm hearing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's good.
With the.
I mean, I guess making the amount required, making, making a full award. Obviously, we can't, we can't fully award, we can't fully award St. Catherine Hospital, but I mean, the next, we could award the next three with the $62,500. $62,500, that's already been allocated. And I don't have my calculator, so if somebody does, but.
Yeah, so I have it, if I'm understanding correctly, it'd be to fund Real Men Real Leaders because they were at 29.
Right.
And that's the full 7,500 that they asked. Funding Big Brothers Big Sisters because they're next at 28, the $23,338. And that would leave $31,662, if my math is right, to Stepping Stone Shelter because they scored 27.
But it's not fully funding them, so we can't.
Yeah.
So you just have to fund the two.
Fund the top two and then leave the 30.
You could partially fund, you partially funded.
You could partially fund.
The hospital.
We did.
No.
Oh, you didn't.
We didn't.
Because it wasn't.
We went, we just went with the top four instead of the top five.
Because we could actually fully fund, so.
So then it would just leave.
Leave those two.
Those two, and then leaves $31,662 unawarded.
So if you spend down even further, what's the next?
City of Holcomb would be the next.
Yeah.
Highest point getter.
At 7,000.
At 7,000 was the requested amount.
And then what's that leave?
24,662.
And then what's the next spend down?
Be KH Life Skills at 24, if I'm looking correctly.
10,000.
At 10,000. And then we have no others that are awarded points after that.
I mean, if you're, I think you just need to be consistent if you're stepping over a fully funded amount to just spend it down to whatever we got left, that we can't fully fund something.
That would work for me.
We had every intention of spending the, what was it, 100? I can't remember.
$200,000.
$200,000. We had every intention of spending that, those dollars, and so.
And that would follow the rubrics on what they measured each applicant, I mean.
The score.
In a kind of reasonable way, I suppose, yeah. Final score with the rubrics and.
Being able to fully fund, yeah. So I don't know how I make that into motion, so that would be my motion, is that's how we do that. So we would fund, using the $62,500, we would fund Real Men Real Leaders with a score of 29. For $7,500, we would fund Big Brothers Big Sisters with a score of 28 at $23,338. We would not be able to fund Stepping Stone Shelter because we can't fully fund it, so in order, we'd have to jump over that one. We'd be able to fund City of Holcomb, $7,000 with a score of 25. And then we'd be able to fund KH Life Skills with a score of 24 at $10,000. And we'd have about, what, $11,000 left or?
I didn't get that.
I'm sorry.
I wasn't calculating.
I'm the worst math person, so I wouldn't, don't trust me then.
Sure.
We can.
Sure. I didn't know if you were asking if you would ask me a question or if you were asking if you would ask everyone a question.
Procedurely, he's asking.
Yes, because I would.
You can ask a question, yes.
I guess I would abstain to that motion, just because my wife is an applicant, so if that, I guess, would I, that way I'm not in.
Yes, that's correct.
Yes, you would have to abstain.
Yes, that's correct. If that one is getting included, then you can abstain of it.
Abstain, okay, right. That's my question, sorry.
So I'll make that motion.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
I'll set her.
There's a second discussion?
What does that really leave us with? And can we give that to someone, too? Like, if we're already here.
It would leave us with $14,662.
Can we give, even though it doesn't, it's not what the hospital's asking, but can we give it to the hospital? It's more funds than none.
Well, then you jump out of fully funding, so I mean.
That's fine. I, I think it's, like, that's still more money that they can use for the services that they provide, and it is the remaining balance there.
Yeah, I'm not, you can make an amendment, you can ask, was he have to do an amendment? Or do you have to run through the motion, or?
I'm just wondering if, like, if there's any interest in that.
I, I guess let's, there, well, we've got a motion, we got a second to on funding one. Three, four. Commissioner Landgraf made the second to fund four additional agencies from the August 2021 AFAC grant funding. Correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion? I, I just think we're kind of, I mean, we had a, we had a huge discussion on how the committee came up with their funding. We came back and said, that wasn't really, I mean, I know it's the commission's final object, I mean, it comes to us for our decision to make, but it came to us from them on how they came up with the, with the funding. We really kind of rejected that and said, we're going to do it this way. Now we're turning around and kind of changing that process a little bit even more and saying, well, again, we're going to modify that modification to make this square work into this round peg, or this round, this round peg to work into this square. So, I just want to put that out there that, you know, it's, again, it's a policy thing. We're changing policy as we kind of move along in this whole process, so that's all I have. Anybody else comment or any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Nay. That item passed. Moving on to, thank you, item 13.
If the commission doesn't have any item they'd like to pull, or I'm sure Mayor's going to check and see if there is someone here present to speak to one of the nuisance items, but if the consent agenda stays intact, the appropriate motion would be to approve 13A through 13F.
Is anybody here for any of the nuisance items from the community? None being? Entertain a motion then on the consent agenda, item 13A through F.
I move that we approve consent agenda 13A through 13F.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second, any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. Commissioner reports. Commissioner Enru.
So I want to congratulate Commissioner Landgraf on his recent reelection, and I also want to congratulate Commissioner, or Commissioner-elect Euler and Commissioner-elect Canales Lozano on their, on their recent wins in the, in the election. And I think it's going to be, they'll both be exciting on the, on the commission and bring a, just a lot to the commission, so. I do want to say I'm really excited about the, the partnership of Live Off Fannie County and the pathways. I think it's an excellent way to really improve our teletra, which I think is, is one of the star attractions of our community. I know, I can't tell you how many people use that. I mean, I use it almost every day, and so I really enjoy that, so I want to say thank you to that. I also want to just say, congratulations to Tish and Jared. I mean, we know that's a lot of work and it, sometimes you wonder if it's really going to be worth it, but it's worth it to us, and so that you did that for our, our community and for us, we just want to say thank you. I also want to say congratulations to Danielle on her new position. That's kind of exciting, and so I'm really excited for you. I really, I, you know, Sister Rosarita, when, now, if you've ever had to rent a plot from her, I can tell you, there is a process that you go through, and there are right answers, and there are other answers that are not as right. But I, you know, I, I'm, it's, I'm going to miss that. We did a, we did a garden for almost seven years out there, and it's a lot of work. No one does more work than she does. And the way that people take care of the garden, the way people take care of each other, it's going to be a huge miss. I just really appreciate all that she, so I just wanted to say thank you to her. I know she's not here, but, you know, for someone who stayed that long and was so dedicated to that opportunity, and she is a neat, neat lady, so really enjoy that. I do want to say thank you to Aldo, who came forward and spoke at the public comment. I think that's really my favorite part of every commission meeting, is public comment, and so Brittany Martin, coming together and saying, hey, I read the commission agenda, and this is where my concerns are. I really appreciated Vicki Gurman's update. Yeah, we were down there, I was down there walking my dogs, and I tried to sit everybody down, and I was like, okay, this probably isn't the day to walk the dogs in the river. But seeing people haul things out, and, you know, the things that have been there forever, but it was really a neat opportunity to have that happen. I also want to say congratulations to Western Kansas Community Foundation, matched they have $150,000 matching dollars, and I'll tell you, this organization has come so far, and the, the work that they do in our community is so much appreciated. And I know that Connie and her staff are really excellent in what they're doing. They've grown this across Western Kansas, really relies on their grants and their grant cycle, so I do want to say thank you. I also just want to say, remember, you know, during this time of the year, this is a hard time of the year, Thanksgiving and Christmas and holidays, you know, there's a lot of people around us who no longer have family, or, you know, might be by themselves, and they, so, and so invite them to come with you to the different things. I mean, there's the Merry Christmas lighting coming up, or invite them, especially the things at your church, you know? And so if you want to invite neighbors to come with to come with you, even if they say no, an invitation really goes a long way. So with that, I just want to say thank you to Garden City, and that's all I have.
Commissioner Ortiz.
I had to write new things because I think Commissioner undertook all of my life. I won't reiterate, but yes, congratulations to everyone around that he had mentioned. Also would kind of like to just mention, thanks to Commissioner Enru for his job well done in the city and the questions that he's asked. And I know everyone who voted for him is going to miss him and, and more people. So we appreciate all the work that you have done thus far, so thank you. Also like to just kind of mention the, the pledge through the city that they were able to raise a record dollar amount of $57,000. What a, that's a tremendous effort from city staff and those folks around the community. So, so thanks for that leadership and leading that and getting that accomplished. I am looking forward to going to Liberal this evening. Hopefully I can find a ride and I'm not walking. Do have a meeting at 4:30, so we'll see how quickly I can get that done. And then also the Chamber breakfast tomorrow. And that's where I met Frank, who talked in open discussion, and he moved here in July, July 7th is what he told me. I don't know why I remember that date, but that's, he's like, it was July 7th. But he came from Chicago. And so getting an outside feed from somebody who sees Garden City for the first time is really important to me, just to kind of hear them talk about Garden City the way that they do. So they really appreciate the nice people, the, the places that they're able to come to, to talk and to, you know, speak openly. So appreciate him coming and bringing that forward. I know there's some, I don't know if we got his contact, so we can get back with him on that question that he had, but I know he'll be at breakfast tomorrow, so I could ask him for it then. Also looking forward to going to the Dodge City Coalition Annual Meeting tomorrow as well. So lined up with meetings at the end of this year, also with holiday dinners and luncheons and then things like that. So excited time, exciting time of the year. But I'd also like to just kind of stress the fact that we do need prayer in our community this time of the year because of the fact that we do need family close. We do struggle with that close contact with family members who, members who possibly strayed away or whatnot, but even those who are like living down at the river, or who are homeless and things like that. So just ask that you sincerely pray for all of us in our community and for our family members, that we have a wonderful time and, and we were just able to love one another unconditionally and support one another. And I know there's hard discussions, but there's, we, that's the only way we can get through things sometimes, is having hard discussions. So if, if you struggle with that, I'll pray for you, because I, I struggle with that. I need your prayer back. So appreciate all the discussion here today, and thanks to staff and everyone, council for asking, answering questions and getting things done. So that's all.
Commissioner Langgraf.
So I just want to start with the pre-meeting. I think it was really great being able to go through that, being able to look forward to funding the third fire station beginning in 2033 through different means. You know, 2033, it feels like it's a long ways out, but I got to thinking, we're closer to 2033 than we are to 2017, which is pretty crazy to think about when that first sales tax was first started. Also want to say thank you to staff for including the past fee amounts, along with the approximate estimated increase based off of inflation on the fee schedule. I think it's really good to be able to have that information out to the public and also just provides that transparency, which is great to have. Just want to say thank you to Commissioner Enru for the kind words, and also thank you for all the years of service you've had on the commission. And also just want to say congrats to Commissioner Alex Euler and Karen as well. And then also just wanted to say, looking forward to all the events this week, and I will make sure that Commissioner Ortiz does not walk into these events.
Got my back.
And then also just want to say, I wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving next week and safe travels.
Commissioner Wynn.
Yeah, our fire discussion today was very informative, and it's the years of certain things that, growing up, and like, I never would have thought, like, there is a lot of costs associated with the fire department running out to a call in all these townships around us. And it's just like, oh, we see these firefighters. But no, like, this is a service which the city has graciously been, been offering to these townships at a cost that's from 1990s. And so these are things that we ought to look at and see how that aids in, in supporting our new fire station. Veterans Day Parade was very exciting. I was very impressed and so, so grateful for the men and women that serve our community, our country, and fight for us. And I also had the joy of presenting to men and real leaders on how to tie a tie. And must I say, this was not a world-class presentation, because there was much more struggling than there was tying, but that's the joy of it, is the joy of continue to try even when it's hard. And I also sat in on a fire presentation, the history of our fire department presented by Aaron Stillwagon at the historical museum. And it was very informative to reflect on the history that our fire department began simply as, as these founders of our community willing to protect, willing to show up and prepare and be ready. And that has grown over time into 50-plus staff members at the fire department, working hard to make sure that they're always ready to serve and protect our community. And I also stopped by the United Way event, and we have such a great committee there that works entirely hard to plan that and to make sure that those numbers keep on increasing to go from a goal of 50 to saying this year, let's try to reach 55, I think, and surpassing that to 57. I think that points to the fact that our organization has a great culture of giving. And just today for our conversation that, especially regarding AFAC funds, it's uncomfortable and it sucks, and it's honestly very difficult, right, to sit in these weird, uncomfortable moments and have to work through with five other people of how can we get to inclusion. I think that it offers to us such a great opportunity to grow and has been a conclusion of, well, look, we've, I think it's a conclusion that we can be proud of, of how we've, can help our community. But also, wondering if we could ask staff to get with Frank, see where that's at for him and information, et cetera. But that's all I have.
Just want to thank commissioners, kind of going off Commissioner Wynn's explanation. You know, we five have to work together to set policy and move the community forward, and sometimes it's not easy, because we all come in with our own thoughts, so you're trying to get five people to kind of mesh into one general direction. So thank you for working together and helping our community move forward. Had the opportunity to present the proclamation at Garden City High School on Monday to kick off American Education Week. Monday was Garden City Public Schools Foundation Day. Tuesday is Thank an Educator Day. Well, it's today, actually. It's where students do a postcard writing exercise to thank the teachers in the district. Tomorrow is Healthy Snack Day. Thursday is Crystal Apple Teacher Recognition, where there are six finalists that'll be recognized, but three teachers will be named Crystal Apple Teachers in Finney County. Always a great event to attend. And then Friday is, in the district is Flannel Day, where we wear flannel shirts to celebrate substitute teachers and substitutes in our district, because they're important. I didn't, I didn't make that one up. I kind of looked at that and went, okay, we'll go with it. So just want to congratulate all of our city staff, one of our former commissioners and mayor. It always note that the city staff always makes the city commission look good. It's their, their job, and they really do an outstanding job. I just want to congratulate them on their outstanding contributions to the United Way. Again, a record-setting number from our city staff in helping to contribute and invest back into the community and to the organizations that help also make our community strong, but help move us forward. I also want to recognize Match Day. That's important in our community. Again, $150,000 match to those organizations in our community. So I know, I think it was a record last year that we had contributions during Match Day, so hopefully we'll see that again this year. A very giving community, and like Connie said, no matter where you are at in the world, because it is, you can donate online. So they started yesterday that you could write your check donation to the Western Kansas Community Foundation. That goes through December 2nd, and that is an all-day event at the First United Methodist Church. So if you're still thinking about it, come out and check it out. It's, it's a great event. Wrapping up, again, thanking staff for meeting their educational experiences. Tisha and Jared, great job on always trying to expand and get better in your jobs, and that helps our community as well. To wrap everything up, I just want to thank everybody for all that you do, and have a happy and safe Thanksgiving. Meeting adjourned.